All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, September 10, 2024. 9:00 AM. My name is Brian Menzies, Chair of the Board. I'm Vice Chair Commissioner Fornier, Commissioner Emily Claus. We have Commissioner Gary Edwards and Charlie McKeon on Zoom. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Manager Jeff Cums, Clerk of the Board Amy Davis here. Assembled, we have virtual attendance available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We're in session until 11:00 AM. First up is review of the draft agenda for next Tuesday's meeting, that's September 17. So if we could pull forward that agenda, meeting will be called to order at 2:00 PM. We will have Pledge of Allegiance be led by Vice Chair Fornier, and then approval of the agenda. Two presentations scheduled. The first one is from the Auditor's Office, Proclamation for National Voter Registration Day.
The auditor and a few of her staff.
And then the second will be proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month.
We have a few representatives from the Hispanic Affairs Commission and representatives from a couple of other groups recommended Commissioner McKeon join us in B.
The proclamation for National Voter Registration Day is attached in our packet, but I don't see the one for Hispanic Heritage. Is that?
Yes, Commissioner McKeon provided some upcoming events that are related to Hispanic Heritage Month, so we're going to incorporate that information in proclamation.
Okay, any questions regarding the two proclamations? Okay, thank you. Next up will be opportunity for the public to address the board and county manager update. Okay, nothing expected there. Move to items. Consent items, three, it says 3A and B, although it looks like there's a C. Let's change the title there. 3A is Commissioners Commerce Grant Agreement for Home Electrification and Appliance Rebates Program.
Rebecca Harvey. All right, so this, oh, good morning. I'm Rebecca Harvey, Climate Mitigation Senior Program Manager. This item is a grant agreement with Commerce for grant funding in the amount of $472,263, I believe it is, through the Home Electrification and Appliance Rebates Program, or HEER program. I provided an e-brief last week, so hopefully that provided little background and details. This does follow up on a conversation we had last February when the Board approved an inter-local agreement among Thurston County and the cities of Olympia, Lacey, and Tumwater for the regionally coordinated initiatives that have been selected by the TCMC, or Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative, for development during 2024. And one of these regional initiatives was the design of a residential energy efficiency and electrification campaign. So now we're in the phase where we've been doing background research to develop this campaign to launch in 2025 and are securing funding to do so. And we are going to call it Energize Thurston. We have a name now. We don't have to call it the Generic Energy Efficiency Campaign. We're building on Energize Olympia, which is a program that the city of Olympia has run for two years, which has provided discounted and subsidized heat pump installations for households in Olympia, and will be expanding it to the entire county and to cover more types of equipment than just the ductless heat pumps that they've been providing in the city so far. So this contract with Commerce for the HEER funding will be used for the Energize Thurston program to provide subsidized installations of energy-efficient equipment for low- and moderate-income households. The program is required to be directed towards LMI, Low and Moderate Income Households. So our county's funding will be directed to households in unincorporated areas and the smaller towns that haven't received their own funding. Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater, and Tonino have all received their own HEER funding. So they'll be directing their incentives towards their residents. And Energize Thurston will focus on installing heat pumps, space heaters, and may also cover other eligible upgrades such as heat pump water heaters, induction kitchen equipment, stoves, and maybe the associated electrical panel upgrades that go along with those installations. So I'm continuing to work with staff in the partner cities to make the final program decisions, including the specific equipment that will be subsidized, what partner organizations we will have. Most likely, it will be South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity, who has been a partner in Energize Olympia and is interested in partnering countywide. We're just finalizing some of those decisions on how the partnerships will work and the application processes, et cetera. And we will be presenting a detailed launch and implementation plan to the Executive Committee of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative in the October meeting. And I'll just mention one more thing, which is a reminder that staff capacity for implementing this campaign has been augmented through our U.S. Department of Energy Community Energy Fellow, who is Julia Downing, working with me. And Julia will be working closely with the staff team to develop, administer, and ensure sustainability to continue this campaign in the future beyond this one grant that we have for the 2025 campaign. At that, I will take any questions. It's a little, a lot of pieces, so I appreciate you listening to me describe it. I hope that helped explain the program.
I think I might jump in just for a quick minute. So, thank you for the great work. This is an action coming out of a lot of work from the Board of County Commissioners, bringing the Climate Mitigation Senior Program Manager on board. All of the talk that's been happening is now coming into fruition in this action for low and moderate income in this $472,000 grant that we're about to potentially accept from Commerce. So this is a cause for celebration. Just wanted to point out, all of the information that Rebecca shared was a lot about the partnerships, the decisions, the direction, now all the way to the action. So this is a big deal.
Awesome. When you mentioned Habitat for Humanity, I didn't understand. How do they fit into this? What are the, what's that partnership about?
Yeah, Habitat has been partnering with Olympia on their program to administer the low and moderate income installations. They are the ones that contract with the installer, and they also contract directly with the households. And they've rolled it into their existing programs for critical home repairs. So they're able to interface with the households and go in there and do some additional minor weatherization upgrades to make sure that the energy equipment is going to work properly. So they're adding it kind of into their holistic programs.
So we're the connector. Habitat is the boots on the ground.
Have you, I remember seeing this at the collaborative meeting, maybe at the retreat or before, but is there updated stats on like how many installations Olympia's program has resulted in to date?
They're in the middle of it right now, and I don't know the numbers for this year. Their 2023 pilot, I think it was 67 heat pump installations that were subsidized. And then they also have self-funded installations because there's a group discount that they're able to negotiate with the installers. So even the non-LMI households are able to get that benefit. I don't remember the numbers, but it was maybe 100 or something of the self-funded.
Other questions for Rebecca?
Yeah.
Please, Ms. McKeon. Go ahead, sir.
Chair.
Yep, yes, sir.
Rebecca, is there any chance that you could take a look, maybe you could talk to folks and CPED, see what kind of a permitting process there is for folks when they want to make some of these changes? I had a call from a constituent that said putting solar panels on your house did not take a permit, but putting them in your yard did take a permit. And he said he's been about five weeks waiting for a permit. And I can't give you all the particulars. I can give you some more information offline. But I just wonder if maybe we, if we're going to have that as one of the county's priorities, that maybe we could look at revising the process or reviewing it to see how we can be more efficient for the taxpayers?
I think so much, Commissioner Edwards. We'll definitely work with Josh and Ashley to round up that permitting question. And if it has a nexus to Rebecca, then we'll round her in too as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
All right, thank you.
Next up is item 3B, Public Health and Social Services Request for Qualifications for the 2025 Point-in-Time Homeless Census Coordinator. Tom Webster.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Webster, Senior Program Manager with the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention. So this item is to allow us to issue a request for qualifications or similar to a request for proposals to find a contractor to help us with the 2025 point-in-time count. This is a count that happens every year in January, the counts of our sheltered and unsheltered homeless population in the county. The Regional Housing Council sets aside up to $25,000 to support this effort due to some staff transitions we're having in our office, looking to bring someone on to help us organize the events for this January, coordinate volunteers, and then do the data entry following that. So happy to answer any questions.
Question for Tom.
I have a question. You said this had, you know, you mentioned staff transitions. Is this something you have done in the past, finding a group to contract with? Or is it typically handled by staff?
We've done it both ways. So about in 2020, we did bring in a contractor, Faith Atticott, to help us with this. Then we hired a staff, Ariel Benson, who helped us with the point-in-time the last several years. Ariel recently left our office. We're replacing her, but bringing out a new staff to get this started. A little extra help this year will be beneficial for us. So we've done it both ways.
Okay, awesome. And then did you mention the dollar amount that's connected to the RFQ?
Yeah, up to $25,000 is what the Regional Housing Council set aside for this effort.
Awesome. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
That's it. 3C is Public Works Item, Acquisition of Tax Title Property in Boston Harbor. Jennifer Walker, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jennifer Walker, Public Works Director. This is an item for the Board's consideration. It's a tax title parcel that is adjacent to the Boston Harbor Wastewater Treatment Plant. Staff did an evaluation of the need for the parcel in consideration of potential expansion, potential regulatory requirements, future regulatory requirements, and offered for the facility the recommendation to secure the property. This was discussed in front at the Utility Advisory Committee in May, and they did not oppose the acquisition of the property. The Treasurer's Office has already been before the Board selling of the tax title parcel, and we are coming forward and requesting approval by the utility to acquire it.
Questions for Jennifer. Commissioner McKeon.
No questions. Just a comment that we will be receiving public comment in support of this next week.
I thought we did it, frankly, so I guess there was one last piece to the process.
Yeah, they're coming back now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
For A, Purchase Agreement for 1111, Legal Row LLC.
Morning, Rick. High-level building and the opportunity we have here?
Good morning, Commissioners. Rick Thomas with Central Services. I'm the Capital Projects Planning Manager. And today, just want to give you an update on the building and property that we've been looking at for the Sheriff's Office. We are at a point right now where we have a purchase and sales agreement draft that has been reviewed by our Security Attorney's Office and our real estate agent. It seems to be all in line with the discussions that we've had during our executive sessions. And we are hoping to come back next week to the Board to get approval, to actually sign the purchase and sales agreement. What that will do would launch us into a 105-day, what is called inspection period, where we are then allowed to go into the building and make a thorough investigation of the property and building to ensure that there are no hidden things that we may not be aware of, so that if we do end up purchasing the property, we have a full understanding of what it is that we're going to buy. So that's where we are now. If I have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Oftentimes, when the prosecutor's office looks over some of this material that comes before us, it'll say, okay, as to form, or the format type thing. Do we get somebody from the prosecutor's office that reviews this, that makes sure everything is okay? That we have covered all the Ts and dotted all the Is? And, you know, we've gotten some input, citizen input on this, to make sure that we're in line with doing the right thing?
Commissioner, right, yes, the Prosecution and Attorney's Office has done that. The form that's being used, it's a standard purchase and sales agreement form that's normally used in the commercial industry. Our real estate agent is very familiar with that particular agreement and used it across the board, and in fact, has used that agreement for other purchases that the county's done over the last few years. And so our agent has looked at it in great detail, literally, I mean paragraph by paragraph, to make sure that everything makes sense from the county perspective. And our Prosecution and Attorney's Office went through that same process, looking at it from a legal perspective. And everything seems to be in the.
To your question, Legal Counsel did send an email confirming that fact.
Yes.
They did. The signing off that it's all fine as to form is one thing. But oftentimes, when we're looking back on something that we've done, and maybe we've gotten trouble over it, there's nowhere on there that says we covered all the legal aspects of this and everything seems okay. So I personally wish that they would sign off on that aspect as well, not just all the forms are filled out properly, but we've met every requirement. So just a personal observation.
Do we have a communication strategy, like to share with the public what, where we're going, what we've done? Like, you know, when this, you know, gets wrapped up, you know, kind of explaining where the funding came from, is something that we can?
It is something that we can develop, yes. Do we have it right now? No?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe now is, yeah.
Well, I have a piggyback on that question. So like, this doesn't say how much we're paying for it, and I guess when? When will that become public knowledge that we paid X money for this property?
I think that's up to the discretion of the Commissioners.
Right, so walk us through the process though, Rick. So this is purchase and sale agreement, but there's some due diligence time in there, correct?
Yes, so.
But the item doesn't come back to the Board after the due diligence, is that correct?
The Board will have an opportunity after 105 days to make a final decision as to whether or not they want to go ahead with the full purchase of the property. What the purchase and sales agreement does is it, if, I'm going to say, it forces the buyer, which is the county, to put forward, in this case, a $500,000 deposit that is refundable before the 105-day inspection time. If the county determines that the building isn't what we anticipated it to be, or if the county just simply decides we do not want to buy this building, and that $500,000 is then reimbursed back to the county. If the county goes forward with the purchase, the $500,000 deposit that's been made is applied to the actual purchase price.
There's no problem with us adding into the description of the item the cost of the building at this time?
Okay, so the.
Well, I'm asking you, is there an issue with adding the purchase price?
No.
Okay.
There is not.
Well, is that something that legal would agree to as well? That's kind of one of the questions. We get, everything looks okay to form, but how much information can we put out? When can we put it out? Those are the kind of legal questions I'd love, because I would like to explain to the public that we've done our due diligence, we've looked at other properties.
Well, we'll run that question by legal, if there's any issues that they see. But again, it's, if there are any legal issues, they will advise us. And if there's no legal issues, we'll have it added to the item, the cost of the building.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care what the answer is. It's just, I just, you know, like Commissioner Edwards was saying, getting public input. Well, we can't get any public input until the public knows what we're spending.
Right.
Because if it's $5, I'm sure the public's happy, and if it's $500 billion, then they're not happy. So that's a critical element.
Good perspectives.
That could be part of a communication strategy. Yeah, well, that's why I piggybacked it on your.
I think, sorry if I might interrupt here. I think the timing is important also. So to begin this inspection period, we don't want to get out and create a communication strategy and have a lot of conversation about what might happen at the end if we haven't even had this opportunity to do the due diligence. So just thinking about when those items get shared, I think is an important piece also. We don't need to get the cart before the horse if we're not even getting.
But the price won't change, right? Like, that's not.
No.
If we don't.
It's either we want it or we don't. We've locked in the ability to purchase it for these many days based on inspection.
Exactly.
The price is the price, and we walk away. We have a good reason for that.
Exactly.
A hundred days out is January.
It's 105 days from the point that the purchase and sales agreement is signed. What our request was going to be for the next board meeting, 17th, would be to ask for the Board's approval for the county to sign the purchase and sales agreement so that we can then enter into the 105-day inspection period.
Saw somebody's hand down here. Can we share with?
One of the issues, I think, that was raised was the number of parking spaces that go with so many square feet of office space. When we moved to this location, we found out that we were not in compliance with the count, with the city code. And so consequently, we're putting out thousands of dollars for another parking location to make us legal in accordance to the city code. Have we covered all of those bases to make sure, yeah, the building's fine. Yes, we meet all the code issues. And one of them, I'll just throw out there because it was brought to our attention, is parking spaces. So do we have enough parking spaces? Are we going to have to rent space? What about the lease that we've got going on with the other folks that are there? All those little technicalities, are we pretty well covered there? Access for those folks in and out of the building, all those kinds of things. I'm hoping that we've got it all, all the, everything, you know, Ts are crossed, Is are dotted, it's all done.
Those are excellent examples of what we will be addressing during the inspection.
Okay, other questions for Rick? All right, thank you. Let's write that down real quick. Okay. Next up, item 5A, CPED Commerce SRP Grant Contract Approval.
I see you, Rick. Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry for that acronym, Stream Flow Restoration Program Grant. So I think Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder sent out a note about this a few weeks back. We have been fortunate to receive an award from the Department of Commerce to move the county's One Water planning effort forward. And that's a planning effort that Assistant County Manager Gelder kicked off a few months back. The actual award amount is $250,000. However, the current contract is only for $177,000 and change. The state is trying to identify the funding source for the additional work. And so you'll see this initial contract, and once that funding source has been identified or committed, there'll be a separate or new contract identifying that additional $72,737. Happy to answer questions about what the audio work will be for the grant.
So this is coming, I'm a little confused, like Stream Flow Restoration Program, I'm familiar with.
Oh, I'm sorry, Salmon Recovery. I.
Okay.
Brian should have been.
All right.
Salmon Recovery, SRG.
That helps.
Stream Flow Rest, SRP, SRG.
Yeah, hold on. Stream Flow Restoration comes through ecology, that's why I was.
Yeah, Salmon Recovery Grant to support the Stream Flow Restoration Program, as well as all of our other water resources programs.
Okay. I wasn't, I'm still not familiar with that program, but.
It's new, and it's a joint program. Yeah, there are a lot of funding right now going through the state, so it's a new one that they opened up.
Another great example of your staff getting money from the state to do the things that you're looking for us to do. In this case, it's Salmon Recovery through Stream Flow Restoration. So good job, team.
This is sort of tangential, but I think I've forgotten this multiple times, and it came up yesterday, so I'm going to not forget it. And are you familiar with the, they call the RAFT tool? It's like a Puget Sound partnership creed, like they hired, basically they pulled some of their LIO capacity money back to hire a strategic funding team. And one of the things that that team has done is create this like online tool to try to help coordinate all these different grant programs. So you kind of put in what kind of project you're talking about. And, you know, we don't do all those kinds of projects, but we do some of them. And it's supposed to help you like kind of figure out, and then there's people you can call to help with that. If you haven't heard of it, I just want to make sure that you guys knew about it. It's called RAFT, R-A-F-T, and I couldn't tell you what. And I couldn't tell you what that stands for, but it's through the Puget Sound Partnership Strategic Funding Team. And it's, I've had a couple of presentations on it. It seems like a pretty, and it's getting better and better because they've been working on it now for a couple of years. Seems like it could be a pretty useful tool.
Great, thank you.
Anyway, all right. Any other questions for Ashley? No, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next up is Public Health and Social Services, 6A. Amendment 1 to the Interlocal Agreement with TMBH ASO for Criminal Justice Treatment Account or CJTA Funds.
Good morning.
Jalen, good morning.
Jalen Sowers, Behavior Health Fund Program Manager with Public Health and Social Services. For this item, before I get started, do you have a portal of the Criminal Justice Treatment Account packet? I have copies.
I think we need them.
I have them along. Send them to me probably two minutes to get them to your packet. And I'll make sure that they're in IIS for the next stage of this thing. This is part of the board's request to receive a summary of the CJTA funds. And I'm working with Summer Miller right now to finish it. So, this just includes the relevant pieces for the budget and expenditures. All right, so since July of 2018, the Washington State Healthcare Authority has allocated Thurston County Criminal Justice Treatment Account Funds, also referred to as CJTA. And these funds have been administered to other county officers and external partners. Thurston County receives about $370,000 per year in its first state fiscal year through a biennial agreement with Public Health and Social Services. CJTA may be used to provide substance use disorder treatment and recovery support services to justice-involved individuals with active criminal charges or are enrolled in a therapeutic court program. The current contract for CJTA funding spans the 2023 through 2025 state fiscal years for a total budget of about $740,000. We have a maximum of 370 that we can spend each year for state fiscal year. And the budget and funded services table shows the subrecipients' services and budget for both state fiscal years. At current spending levels, PHSS is projecting approximately $90,000 in underspending of CJTA for the first contract year. And that would be July 1st, 2023, through June 30th of 2024. And according to the Healthcare Authority, unspent Criminal Justice Treatment Account Funds can be rolled over into the second contract year. So, the plan for CJTA has been developed by the local CJTA panel. It's identified in statute. It's comprised of representatives from the Thurston County Prosecutor, the Sheriff, Superior Court, DUI Drug Court, Public Defense, and a substance use treatment provider. And all of these folks, they get together, and they are tasked to come up with a plan on how to use these funds. And so, that is what is part of that budget packet, is what the commissioners approved of back in September of 2023. And our local panel did meet in May of 2024 to look over underspending and make recommendations on how to address that. And so, the first was to add $35,000 to DUI and Drug Court Agreement for their new treatment services contract, which the board did approve in July. And this increased their budget to about 174,000. And the second, yes.
Can you just explain the context of this? Yeah, I've not seen it. I don't think it went through the agenda process. So, give me a little context.
Yes, the context to that. So, back in July, when I came to present with Sabrina Craig, the DUI Drug Court Agreement, the board had requested a summary of Criminal Justice Treatment Account Funds. So, I believe that was the budget, also who was receiving the funds, funded services. And so, that's something that I've been working on with Summer Miller, and we're trying to schedule a meeting sometime soon to go over it with you two. This is just the budget and expenditures piece because I felt like it would be relevant to the commissioners. So, the second, which I'm bringing you today, is to add $40,000 to the ASO Housing Agreement. And so, this program uses CJTA funds to provide housing case management services, including temporary rent subsidies to individuals with substance use disorder and active criminal charges with the goal of reducing the risk for future legal involvement and supporting their recovery. Historically, the ASO has spent down their allocation and has also utilized unspent CJTA funds from previous contracts to increase rental assistance funds. So, I'm requesting that the board authorize the amendment of the ASO Housing Agreement to add $40,000 in CJTA funds for a total of 222,000 between July 1st, 2023, through June 30th of 2025. I also have Jason B. Mortensen, the ASO's Care Coordination Director, on the line if he has any other things to add to that.
I think you covered it all really well and happy to answer any questions. Are there specifics about the use of the funds in the program?
Thank you. I don't have any specific questions about the program, but more about the CJTA fund. So, the 369,933 is kind of what I'm seeing. So, that's exactly what we receive every year and what we have to expend. Is that correct?
Yes.
We can't spend anything more or anything less, a use-it-lose-it situation?
So, it's for the 369,000 in the first contract year. If we do have any unspent, they can roll over into the second. But we can't spend over the amount for the, for the first contract year. So, for the 369, like, we can't go over that amount.
Okay. So, usually it's, right now, we're in the 24, 25 budget year. So, funds from this year can roll over to next year?
Correct.
I guess I have one question. So, is there any talk about inflationary costs? And how that could be cutting our ability to provide the services we need? Because getting the same amount that we got last year really is probably 10% short from what we need to provide the same service if we're expending the money in that year. Or maybe we don't expend it, and we always have enough roll over. I don't know.
Historically, we have had about $80,000 to $90,000 in underspent for the first contract year. But you do make a really great point in terms of higher costs for services. For example, one of the reasons why the local panel recommended increasing DUI Drug Court's allocation for CJTA is because they're noticing that. Give me a moment here. There's, the service providers are charging more. I can't remember the exact percentage, but something at least 4% more, so.
So, where do you make the cuts?
We haven't needed to make any cuts at this point in time because of the underspending.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, sorry. So, whenever there is underspending, and let's say if there is to be underspending in 2024 as we roll into 2025, then does the group meet again? And they make kind of new allocations depending on the need?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yes. And that's where these two recommendations that come up, the one for DUI and Drug Court and also for the ASO Housing, because they do meet on at least a quarterly basis. And so, we'll be meeting again to talk about what are we going to do with our remaining underspent funds. In your packet, we have expenditures through March 31st of 2024, and we're still waiting to fully process the April through June expenditures, so, which will go through the full extent of the first contract year. So, we're hoping to get that information once it's available in TC Connect so that the whole group can look over and make the recommendations. Some other considerations we've been looking at are therapeutic court practitioner trainings. And there's other options on the table as well.
So, you mentioned that there was a request from the board to kind of get an overview. And if I understood you right, that's coming in the future?
Yes.
But I guess I'm wondering, I mean, this chart is really good, and it kind of shows the breakdown. I mean, is that, what is it that you're going to be presenting that goes beyond this?
There is some additional background on the first pieces. For mostly for this piece, I wanted to make sure that you had the budget and the funded services just in case when we're going through and talking about this. If you had questions, then you could see it in the easy tabulated form. But there are some additional pieces.
The other part of the work, Sasha, that are asked besides this was how did, our treatment courts were funded? Because as we see here, DUI Drug Court. And so, just based on that previous conversation is why I was like, I would like to know exactly how our treatment courts are funded. Like, what are all the funds that are required on these ongoing programs? So, that's the other piece.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Anything else for Shailin?
Thank you for this.
Thank you.
All right, that covers item 6A. We'll be going to Public Works, 7A. County Road Administration Board Rural Arterial Program Grant Application.
Good morning, Board of County Commissioners, County Manager. My name is Matt Unsman. I'm the Thurston County Engineer. This item is to approve Public Works to apply for a grant application to improve a portion of Morris Road between 143rd Avenue and 133rd Avenue. The County Road Administration Board has requested submissions for their 2025 to 2027 Rural Arterial Program Grant Funding Cycle. The grant application requests $3.2 million to upgrade the road to current standards and improve the safety for more than 750 users that use that roadway each day. Improvements funded through this grant would include roadway reconstruction, widening and paving of the shoulders, upgrading the drainage to current standards, removing an existing fish culvert, which Yom Creek closed through, realigning a, some substandard horizontal curves, and removal of roadside hazards, i.e., trees, and relocating power poles, something that errant vehicles may hit if they want to go off the roadway. The estimated total project cost is $4.1 million, with the remaining cost coming from the County Road Fund. For some additional information, in at least my 20 years here at the county, we have never not received crab funding when we requested it. I'm looking at Commissioner Mahia because she is on the County Road Administration Board.
I'll try.
No, no pressure. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You mentioned that a part of this spending is going to be towards a salmon culvert. Is there any reason that we couldn't get money to cover?
Absolutely.
Out of salmon recovery or?
Yeah, and this project is still, like, it typically takes five to six years to deliver a project. So, we still have time to go after and leverage. If we were to receive the crab funding, we could leverage that to try to get some additional fish passage funding as well.
And for those that are watching, when do you anticipate this might get started? Working on it, what year would that be?
Uh, 2029, 2030. I know that seems like a long ways out, but that's, that's how long it takes to deliver a project, especially a long linear project like this, where we're going to have to do quite a few partial right-of-way acquisitions. It just takes time.
Okay, thank you.
Next up then, 7B, Setting a Public Hearing for the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, for 2025 to 2030.
It's that time of year again. Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners set a public hearing for October 15th, 2024, at 3:30 PM to receive comments from the public regarding the six-year transportation plan. Per state law, the board is required to adopt a six-year transportation improvement program each year prior to setting the budget. Public Works briefed the Board of County Commissioners on the TIP on July 31st, and a recording is available of that briefing on the county's YouTube site. The TIP will be made available to the cities of Thurston County, the chambers of commerce, the community neighborhood groups, and interested residents for review and comments.
TIP, public hearing. Any questions?
All right, thanks, Matt.
Thank you. Standing items there. And then we have a public hearing to address at 3:30. Public hearing to consider proposed special accommodation excise tax ordinance. Can't hear you too well. Your volume is super low. I can hear your voice, but not enough to understand.
Is this any better?
It's a little bit better.
No, but not good enough, no.
Still low, but I can actually hear if we try.
All right, I will try and talk extra loud. Jenica Machado, Economic Development Manager. The public hearing is set for September 17th at 3:30 to discuss the additional 2% accommodation excise tax. We have discussed this over multiple different meetings, and this is the final step in that process to hear public comments. This is currently a tax that we collect at 2%, which is our basic or transient lodging tax. In early March 2024, the Thurston County Commissioners provided staff direction to pursue the process required to impose an additional 2% lodging tax. The proposed special accommodation excise tax ordinance imposes a special excise tax of 2% on lodging and creates a new Thurston County Code, Chapter 5.71. The additional lodging tax is not a credit against the state sales tax, like the current 2%, but is instead a tax increase for the lodging patron. The combined lodging tax rate would be 4%. Thurston County lodging tax revenues must generally be used for tourism promotion, acquisition of tourism-related facilities, or operation of tourism-related facilities. And per the RCW requirements, this proposal was submitted to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for Review and Comment, in which our Thurston LTAC Committee unanimously supported the additional 2% increase. I'm happy to take any questions.
Jenica, questions? Okay, well, we'll get public comments.
How's our fund commissioner say, is it good to go?
I, I am in favor. I appreciate Jenica's hard work.
All right, thank you, Jenica.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item two on the morning's agenda, which is Proclamations and Awards.
Good morning, the EMI Davis Press of the Board. Further from this morning, the auditor and election staff will be in attendance to accept the National Voter Registration Day proclamation. And we've invited a few guests to the, to accept the proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month, ready by Commissioner Mahia. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is October 8th, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Okay, with no questions there, we'll go to advisory boards and commissions.
I do not have any updates this morning.
No gaping holes here in our, do we know anything about Law and Justice Council, where that stands?
They are taking applications to the Law and Justice Council meeting in September, September 17th.
Can I ask in regards to the Capital Area Regional, the Public Facilities District? I know that the City of Lacey had sent in a recommendation.
They did, and they followed that up with a request for the other jurisdictions. So, us, Olympia, and Town Water to hold.
Okay.
As they're going to do a little deeper review.
Okay.
Applications that they received.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Next up, Commissioner Items, and.
I was like, before we go in executive session, I do have the Commissioner Items.
Okay, let's take, let's take non-executive session-related Commissioner Items. We have plenty of time. So, go ahead, Commissioner Mahia.
Okay, I guess my first one is a request on an update on the permitting timeline and kind of where we are on the backlog. I know that staff have been really working very hard for the adjustments that are going to take place in the future. I'm requesting it now, not that I want it to be like now, but for later in the year, maybe closer to, to the end of the year. And I'm bringing it up now because I know our calendar gets filled up with budget stuff towards the end. So, but I think it would be good for, as I've been attending community events, that's been one of the main topics, has been permitting and the permitting timelines that are going to take effect. And so, just, I think it'd be good to receive an update from staff on where we're at. What's the plan? What's the support that they need? What's the communication? And that's my first request, if that's possible. And then my next one is just a heads up that right now they are receiving applications for the 2024 Miss Dungeness Contest. And this is a new contest for the County Road Administration Board. And it's basically a show us your most dejected, overlooked, and in need of a glow-up road. And so.
Miss Dungeness?
Yes. And so, what this program is, right, it's kind of just trying to do a kind of fun twist. Local roads are not eligible for current grant funding sources. And so, they're really trying to get the counties excited to submit kind of these roads that are really in need of upgrades. And crab will be getting all of those together and.
Okay, is Dungeness because it's the crab board?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm, okay, now I can listen. I couldn't get past the.
Um so uh Crab will be presenting all of these proposals to the legislature. Uh as many of you know, I do go with Crab up to the legislature quite a bit uh during the legislative se- uh session, and um I think this is a just a great way to provide examples on how much counties are struggling to um kind of make these projects uh go further and how the county road fund is not enough sometimes to really uh do these projects and that we really need access to grant funding. Um so I will be working with Public Works and seeing which projects they're going to be submitting uh because as a crab board member, I would, you know, I it's always uh better when I'm presenting from my own place and know exactly what I'm talking about and how it's affecting our community.
Sure, Josh and Jennifer would be happy to round up some options for you.
Sure.
Thank you for representing the county.
Those are the two.
That's it for you?
Yeah.
Can I, can I ask, uh you're you're questioning about the permits and how we're doing on permits. That has to do with the new requirement in January of twenty-five, is that what?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, on the timeline.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. Uh I have, I do have a couple issues. Uh where are we at on TC Connect, I guess? Uh and the reason I'm asking, I hear other entities of the government are having a hard time making it all fit, so is there a timeline or anything coming about? I could say, well, I think within the next six weeks, within the next six days, uh we might make headway. I'm, I know very little about this. I just get asked questions about it, about are we, are we getting towards a fix?
Um we are having some major implementation struggles right now. And uh there's a team that includes the auditor's office, our fi- our budget team, I T, and members of um the county manager's team working on solutions with our implementation vendor, Sierra Cedar. In fact, I'll be sending an email to them today outlining collectively the concerns, but as I mentioned last month, what I think is about a month to the date because we had our appointed directors here. There's normal challenges that you have in system implementation, but the challenges that we're having are making the individual modules, and there's several of them, work together. And it's getting critical because it it really does affect how some of our departments issue information out. So we have been working with those departments, working with our implementation team on some temporary solutions that are pressing the vendor for uh fixes. And so the email I'll be sending out um after this meeting that a number of folks have reviewed is a pretty high-level concern that says we need to come up together with our implementation partner, what the permanent solutions are, which could include rebuilding aspects of uh the system so that they work the way they are intended to work. But it's normal to have transition ups and downs. I would say that where we're at is a little bit abnormal in that we're having some major system failures and working those through. Uh and the next step is to elevate that with our implementation vendor uh and to see what their resolution is going to be before we take the next step.
Are are other jurisdictions that are possibly making these kind of changes? Are they facing the same thing? Or are we reinventing the wheel and kind of stand alone on this problem?
Many large system implementations like this don't always go as designed. So we're not unusual in the situation. I think there was a data point, Josh, I think you said it to me.
Right.
What was the percentage?
It was thirteen percent are successful.
Thirteen percent, and so whenever you're looking.
That's without any bugs. Thir- thirteen percent of the folks that are doing it.
That's what this article.
Have no problems.
That's what the article.
And so success is measured based on ability to transition. I think that um there's an opportunity for the board and um my office and I T for us to collectively have a conversation about system implementations because um system implementations are like open-heart surgery. They're very, very um uh delicate, and there's a lot of touch and go. And um this is a great learning opportunity for Thurston County as we want to innovate and implement new systems. But I think there's some key learning lessons for us to take away from this. Um I would say that uh without over-exaggerating, this is probably one of the the number-one frustrations in our organization at this time. And so it has Auditor Hall's full attention, my full attention, our budget team, her finance team, Sherry as our I T director, her top resources. And we've been working on this for weeks and weeks. Um Robin Campbell, Summer, uh Diana Benson. So we have some of the county's top leadership that are wrestling through these implementation challenges. We think we'll get there, um but it's going to be some time. So can't tell you in six weeks everything is going to be fixed. I would say in six weeks, everything should be better than it is today. On road that we should be getting better and better every week after that because we're not only changing the computer system, but in that process, we have to change the complete workflow of something that touches the entire county. And whenever you're doing that, there's a lot of workflow migration that you have to do that in this situation, we have staff that are trying to do that in addition to their day jobs, and that's where the strain is coming on folks because they effectively are asking me and asked to do two different types of workloads. I I really appreciate, and I'll end with this, really appreciate our department heads, leadership, the pit leads, and all the staff that are touching this. They are doing an amazing job working through this, and I understand their frustration. It's normal to have frustration, but I think that uh as my commitment from a county leadership standpoint is that we look at implementations in a different way, and I believe Sherry is completely on board uh with that approach.
I guess uh when we're done, this is going to be some kind of a total system that every entity is going to be utilizing at some point. But if one entity runs into problems, I don't know what, I don't, I can't even explain what problems are. Gets hacked, I I don't know, I don't, I just hate to think we end up with something like the port of Seattle with uh the airport up there recently, really threw a wrench in everything. So are we compartmentalized enough that something happens in the treasurer's shop or the prosecutor's shop that it doesn't take the whole system down to where everybody's out of business?
Well, the the system itself is um different components that all are supposed to work together. So some things are working fairly fine, but other components of it, and it's mainly our ability to get the information out of the system in a way that we need to run reports. The reason why implementations struggle is because staff, we have expert staff here that can do that probably with their eyes closed. They've been doing it for years, and a report comes out. Well, now that's the workflow component, so that's why there's always uh change management, system implementation. Right now, what we're dealing with is when a request is made for information, it's, we're getting, we're having a struggle getting the information that we need, and it's normally because of how information was implemented or how the module was processed, uh was developed to process that information. That's what we're working on. As far as it being compartmentalized, um it is supposed to work integrated, uh as an integrated system, a bunch of parts working together. Um and so that's the problem we're having is that some of the modules are working okay, but when they they're tapped into work with other modules, they're they're not, and sometimes we're going down. It's nothing to affect where we're being hacked, that's not the issue. The issue is just functionality, and that's what is causing the strain on staff, is their ability just to get their day-to-day work done. Something that we all touch is time sheets. Time sheets were entered a certain way, staff knew how to do it. Now, the module that comes in to implement time sheets is working differently, and we're working through those differences to make sure that it's what we need in order to do our job and to report out the way we need to report out.
I guess from my perspective, I look at the board, one of the board's responsibilities is trying to spend the money right, do the right thing with the taxpayers' money. And are we exposed more during this time? Uh a lot of times went by that I haven't looked at a voucher list, and that's kind of where we make our expenditures. And I, you know, I I hope there's not anything slipping through the cracks that, you know, and it just makes me nervous. I'm not a technical person. I I think these folks are doing a a great job on trying to catch up. I know everybody's working hard on it, but I I guess I I'm concerned, I guess that's where I'm at.
And I share your concern, Commissioner, as does as does the leadership team of Thurston County. We are prioritizing this, it's pretty much the highest level. I think we've met several times last week, we'll be meeting again. I've asked the department heads to prioritize in uh the work that their staff need to do to implement data into the system that'll help us move things forward, uh but we are working on it. Thank you for raising.
Is this, is there going to be any um impact of all this on the budget process and timeline? And if so, what will that look like?
I believe there already is impact on the budget timeline. I mean, the budget timeline has has moved. Um what we have shared with you uh with the changes, I think a few weeks back, we don't know that there's any additional changes that have to take place. As soon as though we we do, we will notify you.
Okay.
But I would say, Commissioner, to your question, it is, the team is having a hard time doing their normal budgetary jobs because on two fronts, that same team is having to take time to make sure the system is working, but in a place where they're still developing a workable system, they don't have a system that they can just do their job with. So it's, it is becoming a problem. It has been a problem for several weeks now, if not months. Uh we are working through it um and elevating it appropriately so that we can get the support and responses we need.
We've had other jurisdictions that are affiliated with us that have run into bill-paying problems or receipt problems that and and I just wonder, are we, are we still manually doing something over here while we're trying to get it fixed technically?
Yes, yeah, and we're triaging those needs, but um and it's normal that when you switch systems, bills may may lag, and the team communicated that to um our vendor, I think Auditor Hall's team for running point on that, effectively saying that this is going to take a little bit more time. Uh we are encouraging folks that if they have a problem, contact us immediately, and some have, and we've been able to work to get them paid quickly, but we're not fully transitioning, and things are not running smoothly yet.
Okay, thank you. That's good. Commissioner Items, before we go to executive session, yes?
One more. Um so uh T C S O has released their use-of-force dashboard for twenty twenty-three, so that is data that is available now on the Thurston County page, so. Or any member of the public who is interested in the twenty twenty-three data from the sheriff's office, it is now available.
And what we're just now talking about doesn't have any effect on whether people can view that or look at it or anything, I suppose.
No, it's available, it's on.
Okay. Then with that, we'll go to our listed item executive session pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty-one ten-one I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions. And before I launch into this advisement, prosecuting attorney is present.
Yeah, I believe their team.
Julie and Brian from each arm.
Yeah, Julie Kerrigan and and Brian.
Okay, just making sure.
We wouldn't do this without their, without our legal team.
They're not going to be present for this session?
No, they they are.
Okay.
They they may be, we need to assemble them because this is a bit early. So we'll work on.
Okay, very good. Um order to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation whose agency governing body or member acting in official capacity is or is likely to become a party in public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. Agostino is the specific topic, whatever that is, and we have approximately thirty minutes uh scheduled. It's ten oh five. We'll be back at ten thirty-five.
Okay, it is 10:49 AM. We have concluded the executive session and that conclude, uh, direction was given but there was no formal legislative action being taken by the board and so we're at the end of the agenda setting meeting so this meeting is adjourned.